Good evening, everybody. It is September 23rd, 2020. We are having our online Zoom School Committee meeting. And I will start, as usual, by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. And our order of business this evening is our call to order, opening procedures, agenda review and adoption. We'll have some time for public comment. And our administrative items include the superintendent's update COVID-19, appointment to accept board, school choice allocations, policies, our second reading on the ACAB sexual harassment policy, warrant approvals, Mrs. Bates, consent actions, approval of minutes. I think there's, are there three sets of minutes? Okay. I'm reading my older agenda and I think an updated one came out with the third date on it. But August 26th, 2020, September 9th, 2020.
August 31st.
Thank you, Kathy. And August 31st, 2020. There will be acceptance of gifts and donations if we have any committee reports of activities. The Assistant Superintendent update, if we have one, member updates, action items, and then we will adjourn. So I'll take a roll call and ask you to also state if you're okay with this order of business this evening, Mrs. Bates.
Here and yes.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams.
Here and yes.
Mr. Terry.
Here and yes.
Mr. Kendall. Are you here? Oh, there you are. Were you muted or did I just? Okay, sorry about that. Yeah. Okay.
Really low. Paul.
You can't hear me there, Erin?
It's really low, yeah.
Yeah, that's a little bit better. When you get on to share about the policy.
Yeah, I don't know why that did that, but I just muted unmuted.
Yeah, it did help a lot. Thank you. Okay, I will start by asking if there are any members of the public here who would like to offer comments this evening. And I see one hand up, Mr. DeSoni, anybody else before I let you get started? Okay, Mark, go ahead. You've got your three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mark DeSoni. And I'd like to say to Mr. Superintendent and to Mrs. Duran. Mrs. Duran, I drove by the high school on the first opening day in the morning. And I want to ask, is there any way that you people can get a police detail out there to figure traffic out? That's one question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jim. I was gonna, you don't usually answer questions during the comment period. But so why don't you, Mark, tell us a little bit more about like your concern? And then if Jim wants to speak to it when he gives his update or if there's something that they need to then go back and take a look at, they can let us know at a later meeting, but could tell me a little bit more about what you noticed.
Okay. You could, I still need to answer that because to Mr. Paul Kendall and the new school and for the Mendez and for the public safety building, if nothing's gotta be changed before the safety building gets built, that's gotta be a hectic area in cases of emergency. That's the reason why I could like drove by one morning about eight quarter past eight in. It's like a U-shaped stuff on East Union Street. There was no police detail to understand the traffic flow. So in case with the public building, in case anything happens and regular traffic with the morning drop off and pickup in the afternoon, they're gonna be a police detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm sure that they will, they will look into that. We'll go next then right to you, Jim, with your update on COVID-19, please.
Sure. Second week, I mean truly getting back into the routine of giving an update of what's going on in the schools versus just COVID. As you know, we, on the COVID updates are typically something we do on Fridays now with, with the school committee on Friday mornings. And the new data will come out again tonight around six or so, should be coming out soon. But more importantly, I think we've, I feel really good about how school has started with the hybrid model in terms of, this is our second week tomorrow will be our second group two week, if you will. So it's day three for those folks. I think we're still finding and trying to find our rhythm with it. And today was the first remote learning day of, for the hybrid model. And that too will come with some, some, you know, challenges as we get, you know, teachers more and more acclimated to, so the folks who are doing in-person teaching and then they have to transition to a remote component on Wednesdays and then back, transition back to the in-person teaching. You know, will take us a couple of weeks and there'll be a survey that I will send out probably after three weeks to the community to ask about, you know, the hybrid specifically with the remote and the asynchronous component when those, those students are not in the classes in person. And to see, you know, it's ranged anywhere from it's too much to it's not enough. So there's trying to find a balance. But I've also said to families that this is, this is nothing that's exact science. It's gonna be constant that we evaluate it and then adjust it as necessary to meet the needs of our kids. So, so that's going well. We're continuing to monitor with Audrey LaCroix and the nursing staff, our procedures, making sure that we update those as necessary. Some of our forms are a little confusing at times where if families, we're asking families to identify potential COVID symptoms. But again, every one of the COVID symptoms is pretty much my allergies and my sneezing and coughing. And, you know, some students anxiety and shortness of breath, returning to school. Those are certainly COVID symptoms and we ask kids to stay home and families to err on the side of caution. But that comes with also, you know, if they have to reach out to their pediatrician, pediatricians are required to then recommend that students get tested before they come back to school. So, so it's sort of a, we're working through the guidelines with DPH, CDC, et cetera. And, and hopefully this week we'll have a clear checklist for families as well. But, you know, I can tell you Audrey is working really hard in conversations with local pediatricians to, to work through admitting students back into school and identifying students who may or may not have COVID. One of the, the the routes, if you will, is if a doctor knows the medical condition of a child or an adult and there's an, you know, alternate diagnosis because of that, you know, then that is one way, you know, a family can, a child and an adult can be back in the school system the next day is if, if there's an alternate diagnosis presented to our school nurses. So, you know, just, I just wanted to keep in the loop that that's occurring. Certainly, Mike will do a little more discussion with, you know, the professional development that occurred before school began under the Assistant Superintendent's report. I got an email today from other superintendents about Wednesdays and are Wednesdays really hard days from a technology standpoint across the entire Commonwealth. And, and everyone seems to be using Wednesdays as their, their remote day. And, you know, other superintendents locally have said Wednesdays have been, become really a ticket nightmare for people. Whether all the Google classrooms are opening up or we're all using some similar programs. And that's making it challenging. Every, not every family has the high-end internet access and that slows things down as well. There will be tips and suggestions that our IT department has pulled together that families can log into. It's on our main website and we'll send a link out this week in the email. Again, where families can say, they can look at it and say, okay, is this my problem? Here's a quick fix that probably exists already. So, so, you know, thank Paul Carpenter and his staff for that. Other than that, I think that's all I have in terms of the update. I think it's generally been a really positive experience from my conversations in the schools and meeting with teachers and students. And, you know, Mike and I have really made a point to make sure we're in the schools continuously. And, and I think to a person that, you know, they've, they've recognized the work that our admin team put in to develop protocols and to create a safe environment. And what I've noticed is our kids want to be happy or want to be there. They're happy. They're, they're following our rules. They're wearing their masks. They're doing the right things. They are not trying to put their education at risk in terms of moving to a direct remote program. And under, they understand that it's still, it's a challenge. It's a challenge for our teachers who are teaching hybrid every day as well. It's probably the greatest challenge they've had in their, their professional careers, this, this model. And, but the, every educator, like I said, I've talked to has been very vocal about how supportive they've, they've felt and how the planning has taken place that they're really proud of that. So I will leave it at that.
Jim, just a quick piece of feedback. So my Mendez student said today that today was a lot better than last week relative for remote. So he was, he was very positive about where it was going. Today was a lot better than last week. So it seems like we're, we are hammering things out.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah. And again, I said to Lori before, we have an admin team meeting right after this school committee meeting. So, so again, we're continually trying to work with one another and figure out what we can do better. We take the feedback from parents and then we try to digest it and, and implement changes that we can make. So thank you, Paul, for that.
I guess one, one thing I'd offer as well and, you know, I think this is one of those things like people forget what beginning of school is normally like where, you know, it takes a while to get up and running. It takes a while for the kind of workload to build up a little bit and that's on purpose.
Sure.
And this year being there different, but I think there's, I will say I've received some feedback from a number of parents about sort of reading, for example, your email about expectations for today and then hearing very different messages from some teachers. Well, it's a half day and we're really not expecting you to do anything this afternoon. Things like that. I don't know how widespread that is, but I think the message in the email you sent down last night was a little bit different. And so, you know, it's just a communication issue, I think. That, you know, some people are sort of getting up to speed and maybe that's just a transitional beginning of the year. But I'll just share that with you in case you haven't heard that kind of stuff from others.
Thank you for that. And what I can tell you is the email that I shared with the community is very similar to the email I shared with our staff about expectations. So, so there may have been.
I think I understand what you mean. And I'm not, and I, I, I'm not surprised. It takes a while to get going. But it just, you're aware of it that, you know, there's, I think what it is is, you know, we put out a message saying this is what the expectation is and if it appears not to be met.
Sure.
It's almost different. It's almost different if we said, than we said, you know, it's, it takes a while to get going. And we've said that too. Yeah. So people are just kind of feeling it. Things are mixed messages and I know it's all new and I'm not, I'm not blaming your customers.
No, yeah, yeah. No, we dealt with that internally yesterday as well.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. We'll move on then, Jim, to your appointment to the accept board.
Right.
Again.
Yeah. So each year, as required by Mass and a Lot, the local school committee needs to appoint me to the board of directors. So you just have the regular motion there. Unfortunately, I've also been named the chair again by my fellow superintendents on the except board, but.
You didn't step back faster?
No, no, I did not.
Jim, if you don't want us to appoint you, you don't have to be the chair.
No, it's a good point.
You can take care of it right now.
Yeah, no, I think I need.
Next agenda item.
Right, exactly.
I moved to appoint Jim as the representative of the collateral except, decided to be except collateral.
All in favor, Paul Kendall?
Hi.
Mark Terry?
Hi.
Aaron Williams?
Hi.
Kathy Bates?
Hi.
An eye for me, that passes. Okay. Next up, we have school choice allocations.
So each year, it's usually done quite earlier than this. But with our budget process, as it is, it was in the spring. You know, we want to make sure we had all of our numbers squared away in terms of our school choice funding and what we ended our balance with and moving into this year. So typically we have allocated dollars to each school and athletics, special education and technology departments to help supplement the operating budget. And these numbers are consistent with what we've done in the past. And, you know, it's a nice way for, for building principles to help augment again, some supplies or textbooks or things of that nature. So I'm just asking that, that you approve again, the allocations as I've put onto the sheet for you. I can tell you, we have, we're starting the year with school choice funding about 1.3 million. You know, we were anticipating about 1.1 when we did the budget back in, you know, November, January, November through January timeframe. So we didn't spend as much of what we had and we were able to save some of those revenues in the spring. So.
Excellent. Anybody have any questions about this? We do it every year, same numbers as last year. So if everybody's okay with that, I'll take a motion to move that forward.
Do we need to read the numbers, Lori, or, or we not?
I don't think so. I think we just need to get the motion as indicated, Kathy, unless any other lawyers on here have a different opinion.
Not this one.
Yeah, okay.
All right, good.
Thank you.
Want me to make a motion, Lori?
Please.
All right. I move to approve the allocation of FY21 school choice funds to schools departments as presented.
Second. Paul?
Yes, second.
And all in favor, Paul?
Hi.
Mark? Erin?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
An eye for me as well. That passes. Thank you. We have this, our second reading now and hopefully vote on the ACAB sexual harassment policy. Had a good discussion about it last time. And Mr. Kendall, if you wanna just chime in about whether or not there's anything different that we need to consider this time around?
So one second, I'll just bring up. Let me share my screen here. So you're able to see the email I sent with the, with the updated.
Yeah.
So you have the red line version, you have the clean version.
Yeah.
The updates from the first read was the timeframes were added. That if you recall, we, Jim Otis, working through those through. We also included the, we have two Title IX coordinators. So we put that in there and updated some verbiage because it is plural. And the only other one is there was a couple of places where it said business days and just to be consistent with, with everywhere else, it said school days. So they're, they're equivalent, but just to be consistent with the verbiage. So additionally, I sent an email, a sample timeline that helped, that may help people understand where those timelines in the policy came from. And so I don't know if that helps everyone. Does anybody have any questions on the timeline? A question I posed to Jim and we figured we would just pose it to the group is, would we want or is there any value in having this sample timeline in the policy somewhere? Because it is rather complicated as to how these, these end dates, you know, how do we say the investigation takes 55 days? Well, how do we come to, come to that, right? Stuff like that. You know, I think Jim and I were kind of, could go either way, probably leaning towards not putting it in there. But, but certainly thought it was helpful for at least this group to understand the, where the timeframes came from.
Well, just as a general thought, and I have to confess, I did not focus on that change in the policy. Just kind of skimmed through it to see what new stuff was there, right? And look at this in particular, but one of the things that I, I would try to stay away from in a policy is any kind of timeline that looks rigid. You know, in the sense that if for some reason, and there will be a circumstance where there will be a legitimate reason why, for example, I'm looking at day 20, the investigator has interviewed the respondent. There are going to be circumstances where you have allegations that there are good reasons why that doesn't happen. And if you embed some sort of timeline without it sort of being phrased as a guideline or a target, there becomes an argument that you violate your own policy, not moving along fast enough. So, you know, in my view, keeping anything that looks like a specific time commitment out of the policy is probably the right way to go.
Yeah, so the, if we put that in there, it would be prefaced with, you know, all that stuff. And it also says in the policy that, you know, for a reason, you know, I can find the, the actual.
Yeah, there's one piece, Paul, under the investigation, the timelines above may be extended for good cause upon written notice.
Right. So, and there's another part in there that also talks about, hey, this is, this is, this is the goal. But they're, they're, they can, it's not rigid, as you say.
Yeah.
So, and I'm fine not adding it. It was just, you know, it also helps to understand that, hey, if you go through this process and even if things go according within the bounds of normalcy, hopefully we'd be able to beat all these dates. And I think, I think that would be the goal. But if you, if you take all the time that's required throughout it, it shows that from the time in which you, you know, file a complaint to the time where an appeal is decided, it could be a hundred day, hundred school days, right? That's a really long time. But why is that, right? So, so, you know, the, the only reason I would be compelled at all to put it in there is to give people an idea that, you know, we, we should be able to beat that 100 days, I think 99.999% of the time, and that would be our goal. But, but given all the, there's so many times where, hey, parties have 10 days to review this and get back. And this has 10 days, this, and this has 10 days here. And so those add up pretty quickly. And, and so we kind of added that in there just as for informational, for at least for this group to understand that how it really takes hundred, you know, over half of a school year potentially to finally resolve a complaint if things take all the time allotted along the way. So. But like I said, I'm, I'm fine. I think Jim and I are both kind of leaning towards not including it. But wanted to bring it up here to see what the group thought.
Well, I did find it helpful, Paul. So thank you for including that. You know, it does offer clarity. So I guess before you guys started talking about it, I was thinking, it helps, it helps with the clarity and might, it might help somebody that is actually going through it. But I hear, you know, Mark's comment about, you know, we don't want to get tied down. So I guess I'm on the fence too.
What I'm remembering, Kathy, remember back when, when I were on that policy committee together and Barbara too? And we were transitioning from Ashland policies to MASC recommended policies. And in order to do that, we had to go through every single one that was sort of homegrown. And the biggest problem what they had with, with our policies over and over again, actually, is that we went into too much of this kind of detail. And that those kinds of step by steps didn't belong in policy. That was more of a handbook, a procedural matter. You know, sort of something on the side, but not, the policy is more of the, the what and then the how. It's not really supposed to be.
Yeah.
Clouding, clouding things, just potentially complicating things. So.
Right, okay.
So that's where I'm coming from with.
Yeah, that makes sense.
With the, with the no, but I don't know.
Okay.
Any thoughts about it? It just really just has to do with.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah.
Things are going to apply, but it's a matter of whether they belong in the policy.
And I think, like I said, I think I would, you know, be leaning on the no side. But do one difference in this one is this one, because of the regulations, delves further than most of our policies into the House, right? Really describes the process, you know, in a lot, a lot more detail than most of the things. So.
Sure does. So, but if we have an opportunity not to further complicate that by adding more, then it would be, you know, my, my vote would be to leave it out.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. I'm a no also.
So Erin, unless you, you're really passionate and can convince us all.
No, it's fine.
All right. So unless anybody has any questions or concerns about the policy, we can, we can take a vote on, on the new policy, ACAB sexual harassment policy. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the policy ACAB sexual harassment as presented.
And then all in favor, Erin?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
And it's an eye for me as well. That passes. Thank you. Warrant approvals, Kathy, do you have some? You're muted. You're muted now. Yeah.
No, I know. My mouse was on my other screen. Sorry. All right, hold on. Yes, I have, I have. Why can't I get that? Hold on. All right. Between September 5th and September 23rd, I Kathleen Bates authorized by my signature payables in the amount of This includes general fund expenses of $67,107.74 evolving expenses of $16,397.97 and grant expenses of $53,790.90.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, then minutes. We have three sets. So let's start first with August 26th, 2020. Anybody have any concerns or changes there? And if not, I'll take a motion to approve those minutes of August 26th, 2020.
So moved.
And we have a second. All in favor, Erin?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Paul? Kathy?
Hi.
An eye for me as well. And then August 31st. All right, the 31st, the trial, Paul, that you, you made some changes. Did anybody, I did get a chance to read your changes. I don't know if anybody else has anything else to add to that.
No, I thought it was clear. So, and I like how you broke each speaker out. I thought it would. So I thought it was clear. So no, I thought it was good.
Yeah, I just did that also for the opening, opening procedure. This is going to go to the MSBA. They, they do want these approved minutes. So. Which is also why we, why I thank you, Erin, by the way, I think she's on, right? For, for, for going, and she wasn't planning on doing these minutes for this meeting. But if we delayed any longer, we have these for the MSBA before their October meeting. So.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Erin.
Just throw, throw something at her. She's not been doing it, right? Bussing is so easy.
Yeah.
Thanks. They, do we have a motion to approve those?
Awesome, moved. Second.
All in favor, Kathy?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
An eye for me. And then finally, September 9th, 2020. Any issues there?
No, I didn't have any.
Okay, do we have a motion? Okay. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, so moved. Second. Take your pick.
Kathy moved, Aaron second. All in favor, Aaron?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
An eye for me. Okay. Any gifts and donations this evening?
We do. We have one from John and Sue Reap, total $556 for bus transportation donated to the, the bus department. $560.
Do we have a motion to accept the gift?
So moved.
Mark and Aaron second. All in favor, Aaron?
Hi.
Mark?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
Hi, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Reap family. That's very nice.
Thank you. And do we have an assistant superintendent's update this evening?
Yes. So as Jim alluded earlier, we had 10 great days of professional development leading into our school year. We partnered with Edge Escape and Remote School Works and were able to offer some really valuable opportunities for folks to take advantage of learning our G Suite platform to maximize our ability to use all of the things Google has to offer specifically around Google Meets and tools such as Jamboard and other online resources to make sure that our remote instruction could be at its best moving into the school year. Also, during those 10 days, teachers were afforded significant time to plan and collaborate with one another to be able to take what they were learning, reflect on it and, and start to put it into action for the purposes of getting started. On top of that, some of our own folks in Ashland created some homegrown professional development opportunities for teachers. And that was something that, that folks really took advantage of. And they were able to access those through our, our, our own PD website. And I was really proud of what our teachers had to offer for their colleagues. On top of that, we've got a group of high school folks who worked really hard this summer. Our equity and, on equity in action and a leadership team was developed. And they did a book study on white fragility. They chose to do this because of obviously all that is going on right now and the importance of us to ensure that all of our students and staff members feel safe and, and welcome. And what we have done from there is we've brought in two consultants who are working with our district. And they are starting with the high school. And our consultants worked with some leaders on this team. And they, they had an excellent professional development from what I understand from talking to Kelly and some of the other folks who are leading to get the conversation started about what we need to do to become more aware of how we can improve our unconscious bias, our implicit bias, what we can do to ensure that we are having difficult conversations around race and really improving all aspects of our cultural proficiency in Ashland. We're going to continue to work with that group throughout the year. And we're also going to continue to work with those two consultants for the year. And eventually have, have this type of work moved to the entire district. Finally, Claire Landergren continues to work with our K-5 team to incorporate and implement our new Lucy Hawkins units of study in the area of literacy. That work is going quite well. Tremendous work was done this summer to get our bookrooms going. And we're really excited about all that Claire has offered to our staff to, to make sure that our literacy instruction is, is top notch. So that's about all I have to offer right now. And we're excited to see what's, what's coming in the future in terms of some more professional development for our staff.
Excellent. Great stuff.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, just curious, Mike, or maybe, maybe to the principal, which is, oh, my chair just broke. Whether you've had an opportunity to observe what folks have done with the remote learning instruction that, that you provided, just to see how it's taking and how people are adapting to it?
I, I'm, I'll let the principals speak to it if they want. I, I know that from my end, I've been able to see it as a parent firsthand, you know, today, today in particular was great to see the way folks are utilizing Google Meets. And, and right now, we're not able to utilize it to its full capacity because we're still waiting for Google to roll out all of the, the changes that they've made and all of the improvements. And that's going to hopefully happen in October. But I, I saw some things that happened with Carolyn Bro utilizing Jamboard. She tweeted that out and that looked amazing. And we've been able to see some folks streaming lessons at the high school. So I, I think that they are utilizing what they've learned quite well at this point.
You're, Mike, you're fortunate you're allowed to look in. We're not.
Anybody else have anything they want to ask or share about that? Excellent. Thank you, Mike. Any member updates before we sign off and let the admins get to their meeting?
So I, I'll give a quick update. So we, on Friday, we will be, I will, I will not be at our Friday morning that, that it's moved to 8:30. The project team is, is meeting prior to a meeting with the MSBA to review the scope and budget prior to their October meeting. So we've obviously submitted the schematic design report and going to continue that conversation there. And I guess the only other thing is, you know, I, I did put something out to the community, but I just want to thank all the administrators and teachers. I think we can all be so proud of what the work you've done. And I know most people don't even have a clue as to the amount of time we spent doing this. And to look around and, and see, I know so many people in other districts and it just, how well positioned we are. I know people are, are struggling with some things and they're frustrated by others. But, you know, they, they just need to look around and, and, and see how well positioned we are. So I just want to thank everyone for, for all the hard work. And I won't begin to try to name because I'll leave so many people out. But thank you to all the administrators and the, the teachers for embracing the plans and, and just doing a fantastic job so far. So.
I second that.
Yeah, well, well said, Paul. Thanks.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're very lucky. And I don't know if you caught the first part of Paul, what he said, but our meetings on, our meeting this week for Friday, that's usually at 8:00 AM, is going to start at 8:30 this week. Just for this week.
Is there anybody else from the committee that knows that they won't miss or that they would miss?
On Friday?
Yeah.
I will be there.
I will be there.
Everyone's out.
I will be there.
That we have a quorum.
I, I will be there. I'll have a hard stop at nine because I have something I have to get to at 10. But I, I don't know, I don't think we're going to be more than half an hour this week.
I don't either, Mark. And Jim has another meeting he has to get to at nine. So I, you know, what I said to you earlier is I am kind of hoping that we got most of our questions about the dashboard out of the way. We had a lot of questions because we needed to understand what we were looking at. But hopefully now we can just kind of look, apply the numbers, make a decision about whether or not we need to make any changes. And that meeting should be pretty short. Unless there's substantial changes that need a, need a discussion.
Yeah. Jim's coming on to my meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Have a quorum if I can't make it. I mean, I'm going to work through the data and the dashboard tomorrow with Jim and we'll make sure it's all set. So you'll have it, but it's also, the eight o'clock one, when it's going to go 15 minutes, I'm okay with because it goes into my teaching time. But when it's 8:30.
Yeah, no, we, we, and.
I think we've got it covered. Right, we got a forum.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. And action items are the same as they've been for a while. We're going to be talking about this for a while. So with that, I think we're, we're done, right? We have anything else that anybody wants to say before I ask for a motion to adjourn? All right, I'll take it.
I move to adjourn.
And I'll second.
Everybody's really quick to second.
Really good.
Thank you, Kathy. All in favor, Mark?
Hi.
Paul?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
Kathy?
Hi.
An eye. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everybody. Good night.
Better.